Couple of visitors tonight, Cadet Hall, who is a sophomore at Carl Albert High School. They'll be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance in just a second. She plans to join the military and/or become a lawyer when she graduate. God blesses. And Cadet Barkama, did I get it right?
Yes.
Pretty close, anyway. She's already enlisted into the United States Army and as soon as she graduates, as soon as she graduates, she's going to boot camp. Thank you for your service. So with being said, Mr. Sullivan, would you come down and lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand, ladies and gentlemen.
Almighty gracious Lord, we thank you so much for the beauty of this day that we've enjoyed today, Lord. Father, we thank you for the blessing of this occasion tonight and, Father, we thank you for this council and their service to this community. Father, they have many decisions before them tonight and I'd ask your wisdom and discernment be upon them. Father, I ask that personal agendas be set aside and that the decisions that are made tonight will be for the good of the whole. Father, we live in a great city. We have great employees and great services and very dedicated loyal people that serve us and during very difficult times like we went through the last few weeks and actually the last year, Lord, thank you for those dedicated public servants. Continue to bless them in their work and in their service. It's a great state, it's a great nation. We give you glory and honor for all of that. We give you glory and honor for those who are willing to sacrifice and serve to protect this country. We ask your peace and protection be upon them. We thank you for your son, Jesus, and the blood that was shed on the cross for our forgiveness of sin. We ask these favors in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, be seated. Thank you, guys, for coming to lead this. Now we move into community-related announcements and you're on deck, Mr. Lyon.
Midwest City Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program called VIDA will be held by appointment only this year. No walk-ins will be served. All clients will need to call 739-1239, 739-1239 on Tuesdays and Thursdays between noon and 7:00 PM to make an appointment. Be sure and leave a message with contact information if you don't get through. A virtual tax preparation option along with self-serve options are also available for those interested. For further information, call 405-739-1216 or visit the Grants Management page at the Second, the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Board of Grantors Community Improvement Economic Development Application Schedule wrapped up last week. We had a total of 37 applications submitted representing a little more than $1.7 million in requests. I think we have $300 and some thousand dollars available, so that was a large number of requests in a short period of time. Over the forthcoming weeks, the Board of Grantors will review all eligible applications before making recommendations. We expect final decisions to be made sometime in late April or early May. And like to personally put a big shout out to our street department who did an absolutely awesome job over this snowstorm that we did. They were out in about 12-hour shifts, midnight on, cleaning our streets and we had all sorts of issues in line maintenance and stormwater and with all the cleanup and the broken pipes and all the assistance that we provided and our utilities department and our fire department. So very proud of our employees. So our roads were definitely the best in the metro, for sure. And that's all I have. Councilwoman.
I wanted to make an announcement tonight because we have a new committee that's been formed called the Unity and Diversity Committee. And we're seeking applicants now to be able to join that committee. The application is out on our website, so if you know someone that's a resident of Midwest City, we have the application out there and you can actually refer them to the application or to me or to anyone in HR, which would be Troy. Okay, back in the back, Troy's back in the back. We're needing to start this committee up to give some more, to do some suggestions and things to make Midwest City move forward with unity and diversity. If you know anyone, please let us know. Thank you.
Ms. Eads, you have anything?
I do, and I apologize, I don't have the exact date in here. I want to say it's March 8th, but our local Pet Vet Supply is doing low-cost shot clinic, but they're doing it differently this year where you have to call ahead and make an appointment. So if anyone is interested in that, instead of doing it like kind of a three-day weekend, extended weekend and everybody come and line up, it's by appointment only. So if anyone's interested, please reach out to Pet Vet to make your appointments.
Does anyone else have anything for the good of the community? And again, a big shout out to our Public Works Department. Not only do they keep the streets clean, but I got a memo from Mr. Streets. The three-day height of our deep freeze, our water department pumped a record 30 million gallons of water to our residents and without fail, and we had no pipeline breaks throughout the city, so that just goes to show the maintenance is good and we've got a great water department. So again, Mr. Street, thanks for that information and good work. And for those of you that are interested, I will be giving my state-of-the-city address tomorrow virtually for the first time. If you don't have a live and want to tune in, it'll be held live on, you can go to our website or Facebook page and it'll also be videotaped so you can go back and replay and get all my mistakes, so.
Or you can capture still shots and make great memes.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, for that valuable information. I can't thank you enough for your support. That's quite all right. I've got big boy pants on. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, there's no other community-related announcements. We'll go into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of the council or members of the audience wish to discuss an item to be removed and heard in regular order, then the chair would entertain a motion.
Most pro. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. We move into our first discussion item, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion item number one, we need no action.
Okay, no action on item number one. Number two?
PC 2069 Public Hearing With Discussion in Consideration of Inordinance to Redistrict From R6 Single Family Detached Residential, PUD Plan Unit Development and O2 General Office to a PUD governed by the RMD Medium Density Residential and a Resolution to Amend the Comprehensive Plan from LDR Low Density Residential to MDR Medium Density Residential for the property, excuse me, described as a part of the Southwest Quarter Section 6, Township 11 North, Range 1 West, addressed at 10100 Southeast 10th and 1120 South Post Road. Mr. Harless.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon, counsel. This request, planning development, is an 8.44 acre development that is located on this southeast corner, Southeast 10th and South Post Road and encompasses two existing lots along Southeast 10th Street and South Post Road. The PUD is to be governed by the RMD Medium Density Residential District and lists a maximum density of 95 dwelling units. Rentings were submitted with the application that show duplex and town home units, town home meaning four, quadplex. The PUD includes special development regulations for the front and side setbacks and the lot depth. All other requirements, the zoning ordinance and the RMD zoning must be met. A limit of no access is shown along South Post Road and Southeast 10th Street, meaning the individual lots will not have access or have drives onto these streets. The development is served by one access point from South Post Road and one access point from Southeast 10th Street. If this PUD is approved, the applicant will proceed with a preliminary plat application to begin the subdivision process. All required infrastructure must be installed prior to the application of the formal plat. And as noted in the staff report, there's some water and sewer line that's been installed but has never been inspected or put into service and has not been accepted by the city. So that would have to be inspected and tested in order, if this should move forward, in order for it to be used. Action is at the discretion of the council and I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Billy, the first thing I got is just what you just said about the utilities. Can you explain that a little bit?
I think the applicant years ago had some PUDs that were active and he was going in and some plats that were active and he was going in and installing the infrastructure and never finished it and never got it inspected or accepted. And so those expired years ago and so they've been sitting there dormant.
Okay, so help me through this. So if it was done several years ago and they weren't passed and they weren't, whenever they were put in, has the codes changed since when they were put into today?
They have not changed significantly and something that was what we would do and I've talked to engineering about this and they could fulfill, fill in any little details. What they would do is like, for example, the sewer line, they draw a mandrel through there, which is a, like a pig that they pull through to make sure that there's no deflection and it pulls through, okay. The water lines, they'd put water in it and then disinfect it, make sure that there wasn't leaking and do those things. There's a way to get there should this move forward.
It's hard to tell from the pictures, but not every, I'm looking at the plan that was brought forth with the pictures and the drawing and everything else. A lot of these houses aren't going to have any place to park except on the street, are they?
That is, if everything is pushed to the maximum on this and you read through some of the requests for special development regulations, there's a percentage in there that there would be zero to 15 feet setback. And so that is problematic when trying to park in front of the garage. There's not enough depth there, you'd be parked over the sidewalk and it's illegal to park on a sidewalk. So people would end up parking in the streets if that isn't forced or the garage.
But there's going to be some, the way I read it too, is that there's going to be some of these buildings, duplexes and quadplexes that aren't going to have driveways, correct? I'm sorry, they aren't going to have what? There's going to be some of these duplexes or quadplexes that won't have driveways at all.
They'll have very minimal driveways and so it's, you know, I caution the council to not look at a pretty picture and think this is how it's going to look, but if you look at the site plan, that's included with the master development plan, I guess this is the master development, but it's included with the PUD statement, you'll see that there's a number of duplexes and there's a number of quadplexes on there. And when you read the text, it says in their PUD that it's, can maximize it at, I believe it's 90, 95 dwelling units on this 8.44 acres. Well, what's showing on the proposed plan is 70 units, so some of those are duplexes and some of those are quadplexes. And so when you mix in the setbacks, the side setbacks, which are all a concern, you're maximizing the area and it says not to go more than 90% impervious area, which is also obviously a concern.
But there's, for the places, for the ones that don't have driveways, there is no place for them to park other than on the streets, correct?
Yeah, and at this point, it's hard to say that there would be any driveways or not. They would propose some, the driveways would be so short, especially on a zero setback, so you have a 50-foot wide right-of-way, you have from the center line, that's 25 feet and so approximately 13 feet is road and then you have your five-foot sidewalk in there and that 25 feet. And so the way this is written, they could put it up to the right-of-way line, up to where the sidewalk is. Well, there's no place to park there because you're so close.
So they could put a house up to where the front of the sidewalk is? Kind of like what they've done downtown?
A certain percentage of them, as this is proposed, yes. And there are some areas in the country and some areas within the Oklahoma City metro that zero front setbacks are appropriate. Those are usually done with long J-drives that allow you to park into the rear or an alley, so people park in the rear, so that you get the front of the house up next to the sidewalk and you have your porch there, which is a very nice feature.
They have a lot of houses built off of Third and Fourth Street downtown that are like this, right up in the front, your house starts from the sidewalk is. But they have parking offsets, cut off like kind of what was proposed over stack, but they also have alleys in the back where you park and you have your garage in the back. It's kind of hard to imagine a quadplex without a driveway and four, one and a half people per side live there. You've got six people, six cars, no parking.
And I think in addition to the concerns with this, when we're talking about setbacks, we've also have a side setback that several years ago, we changed it from five foot to seven foot. And in this case, where you have a quadplex and you have five feet on either side and then the duplex and then two, duplex, or a quadplex with a unit, 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 you can't get to the backyards and that's a concern. So if people put up fence, which at some point people are going to do, or how are the people going to mow their backyards the way this PUD is written? You know, we have some other places in town where that is a big concern. People have to take their lawnmower through their front room or through their house to get to the back or mow their backyard with the wheel.
But if we hear from Mr. Boxen, if we have any more questions, we can ask you.
Yeah, okay.
Miss Eads might be able to answer some of these questions better.
Yes, sir.
Or he might be able to answer them worse. We're getting ready to find out.
David Fox, 522 Call Core Drive. I don't think it's better or worse, but I'll give you maybe some different information. So the zero-foot setback does not mean that we're on the street. The right-of-way is 50 foot in width. The street is 26 feet. And so even though we say zero, we don't mean zero as if we're on the street. It's zero from the right-of-way, which of course is much wider than the street. All of these units will have at least a one-car garage, so there will be no units that don't have a garage space. In the way that the PUD is drafted now, we allow for up to 35% of the units to have 70-foot and only in those units do we allow the zero-foot setback. All the other units, we have the zero-foot, excuse me, the 15-foot setback from the right-of-way. So some of the units, we are intending to have a more urban-style, single-family, you know, townhouse type of feel and in those units, we will have the garage space for them and then there will be a driveway. The alternative is, and I think it's a worse scenario for the city and it's a worse design, is you don't have the garage and you just have a tremendous amount of pavement. And so everything happens in the driveway. I think it's a better look from a design perspective to have a garage where people are parking within the garage and then there will be a driveway, but they will all have driveways. And as it relates to the question about how to get your lawnmower to the backyard at the plating phase, and we can add it to the PUD if need be, there will be access easements on the side of the quadplexes. So on the quadplexes that have the five-foot side yard setbacks, that will be a platted common area so that all members that live within that structure have access to the backyard so that people aren't taking lawnmowers through their living room because that would obviously be a most unpleasant situation.
I don't take much on faith. So you guys are addressing in words but not in writing as to how the parking's going to be handled. How, you have a quadplex with one driveway, 15-foot setbacks actually means they're right up against the sidewalk. You've got, what are you figuring, one and a half person per house?
Yeah, perhaps.
Okay, so you have a quad with six. You might have four parking spots and you continue to add to all of that stuff. One, you don't really have much of a parking spot because you're not supposed to block the sidewalk.
Well, you'd have four garage, you'd have, per unit, you'd have one garage, at least.
Per unit, okay. Makes me feel a tiny bit better, not a lot. But if you have those setbacks and you're built right up against where the sidewalk is, anybody that parks in the driveway, which is that other .5 person, is going to be blocking the sidewalk. We can't allow that.
Yeah. The alternative is obviously there's street parking, it's going to be a public street, or I think it's a worse design, but you eliminate the garage and you set that building back and all the cars are parked in the driveway.
Have you looked at alleys behind them, kind of like what they're doing downtown?
Downtown.
Have you been off of Third Street downtown just to the west of Deep Deuce? And you see all those homes that are, actually like townhouses, but they're real nice homes. They have, so I'm looking at a picture right here.
Uh-huh.
Behind it, there's an alley where you can actually pull in, either park behind it so you're off the street, you've got a place to park, or you are, you have a little garage that's in the back that you can pull in too. And the only reason I'm asking is a lot of folks that are looking for these spaces right now, they're not looking for green places they have to mow or anything else like that.
Sure. And these are smaller lots already to account for that, but people do want some, you know, element of green space, but no. The way that this product sets up, it doesn't set up for the alleys. What you're talking about are the brownstones. To my knowledge, I think those are the only product that I'm aware of in this market that have, at any sort of scale, those back alley loaded garages.
They also have in the front where they've carved out, where you've got the streak here and then you've got a carved out where, right up next to the sidewalk, where you can park a full car and not actually be in the street.
Yeah, parallel parking along the front.
Yeah, but you're not parking on the street, you're parking on one of those cutouts. There are options where more densely populated areas are popping up all over the country and I agree with, but they're addressing parking and you're really not.
Well, I mean, I would respectfully disagree. I do think we're addressing it. I mean, we're addressing it and the way it's designed now, each unit would have a garage. Again, the alternative is we could meet the 15-foot setback, then you lose the garage. I think you lose the nice urban element that this provides and you have a lot more hard surface paving with just a longer driveway. And so I think you lose, and I wish the images were displayed, but I think you lose that ability to have that nice townhome type feel.
Page 289, Jill. But with your plan, you have one and a half people, which is two cars. You're going to have a very small driveway and people are going to be parking illegally and blocking the sidewalk, so you technically don't have a driveway that they could legally park in.
Or alternatively, they could park in the street.
And then why have, if that's your, if that is your way not to get people to park in a driveway, is to park in the street, why give them driveways at all?
Yeah, well, like I said, I'm not sure that this is a very small percentage of the total lots within the overall development. It's only 35% of the lots that are allowed to have this scenario. That small percentage of the units that can have that are going to market to a very specific, you know, tenant. It won't be as widespread. When we look at the numbers, we don't have the same concerns. I understand your concerns, but we don't believe that we're going to be creating a parking problem.
And don't take this the wrong way, but your concern is about how do we get this built and turn this into dollars for our developer. Our concern is how do we not make an issue once you guys turn the keys over to all the homeowners?
No, absolutely, absolutely.
And our issues can work together often because we have to work together, but at the same time, we've got to look five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, not until just the last house is built.
So the option we're proposing is actually a more expensive option to build. The cheaper option would be to have the traditional 15-foot setback, a long driveway and everybody's just parked out on the driveway. That would be the cheaper option. It would not be as nice of a product. I don't think it would meet with the intent of what Midwest City wants as it relates to this type of zoning category, which is why we propose it this way. So it's not a function of we're saving money by doing this. This is actually a more costly design. I just think it's designed in a manner to be what the city is striving for.
Councilman in favor, is this is in your ward, correct?
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I have some concerns about giving up the extra 10 feet or even further, I guess, for some of those. I also have concerns about the, you know, if people are parking in the driveways and we've got sidewalks, are they going to be parking on the sidewalks? Because we've given away that extra 10 feet where the setback is.
Sure. Again, it's a small percentage of the overall units that would be allowed to have that scenario. What our metrics show us is the people that that's going to be appealing to, the size of structure that's going to be appealing to. It's not likely going to be a family with a bunch of cars. But again, appreciate your concerns, but with the small number of units that we're offering and all of the other units, of course, are required to meet your standard 15-foot setback so that that scenario does not exist and couldn't exist based upon the way that the lots are set up, we're at least convinced that we won't run into these issues.
Except for the 25%.
Well, again, but the 35% is not the same person that's going to occupy the other ones that are likely to have more cars.
Yeah, but if you're averaging 1.5, that means in you're, you're going to have some houses that are going to have four people, some houses are going to have two people. And a lot of folks who are just a single person have two cars. My other concern is variances, and I don't really like a lot of them, especially something like this. Billy, if we do a variance like this, we open it up for any builder that wants to come in and build a home with parking, with setbacks right where the sidewalk is and nonusable sidewalk, which can't park there, is that correct?
Yes, I think in certain circumstances, it does open the door to that. And I will, just a correction, the standard setback is not 15 feet, it's actually 25 feet. So it's significant difference from 25 to 15 and then of course down to zero.
Why the 10, the additional 10 foot?
Yeah, yeah, it's from 25 to 15. 15 is not the standard, it's supposed to be 25. And then you also look at those variances on the back. So as I said, when you look at this plan, there's approximately seven units there, 70, I'm sorry, 70 units. And if they maximize what they do under this, there would be 90, there could be as many as 95 there.
Can I ask a question, Billy?
Yes.
So speaking about parking on the sidewalk and there's no limitation of parking on either side of the sidewalks, correct? The sidewalks are outlined in the white outline, correct, around the roadway? So in the current plan, I mean, there's no prohibition on parking on both sides? So if you had cars that were staggered on both sides, is the width of the lane still wide enough to get a fire truck down?
So our standard would be 26-foot. So, our standard would be twenty-six foot through there.
Sorry.
If you have two Tahoe's parked side, parked across from each other, two big Tahoe's parked across from each other, not a small car.
So, parking space is approximately nine and a half feet wide.
Yeah, but if Tahoe's a little bigger, you got, can one of our, can our new fire truck that we just spent a million dollars on get down, if there are two trucks or two SUVs parked side, across from each other on the same street?
So, what does it take for, what is, how wide does a fire truck need to get through?
Thank you for annotating my question.
And that would, of course...
My turn for Susan every so often, folks.
Yeah, that could be more complicated with, on a corner.
We, as far as to my knowledge, when the Fire Marshal looks it over, we just go by the street width, and the twenty-six is the minimum. We don't know that it's ever presented to us that's parking on the streets, or, like the others, we have had some that parking was considered on the streets, and as Councilman Reed said, it was a cutout for the cars to park to give us the twenty-six width on there. They haven't come to us and given us anything proposed, with my knowledge, with the parking on the street being allowed. So, I mean, it's just as the original mile section, it's tough for us to get up and down sometimes. It's going to be tight, but...
But in fairness, I mean, to annotate what the chief said, you know, the original mile section is a problem that already, it's on, I guess I'm just not... The, the original mile section is a problem that already exists. It's not one that we have a chance to address before it gets underway. So, that's my question.
We can stop thirty years or fifty years from now what's happened in your neighborhood.
That's my question.
See, I interpret pursuit every so often.
And in fairness, it's the same thing with the ambulances. I mean, because...
Trash trucks, everything else, yeah.
Right. So, I, it's expansive, and that's why I have this question.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I may, perhaps we defer this item. We're caught a little bit off guard. This flew through Planning Commission, unanimous recommendation. We were advised of these major concerns eleven minutes before the hearing, so we really haven't had a chance to properly respond. My client would like to at least get an engineer to look at this, to see what other alternatives we can do.
I think that's a great idea, and I will also invite you, Mr. Box or Joel.
We will, we will take no action on this, Mr. Box, and you guys can, take a look at some of the issues, and then bring it back to us.
I'm going to invite you guys, though, if you have, if you know that you've got something coming up before the council, you are free to call any of the council people and see if we have any questions. We'll be more than happy to tell you if you do.
March, March 23rd. What, why can't we meet March 9th?
Well, because staff reports due Thursday.
Okay. So, we'll take March 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Box. We appreciate it. So, no action taken on this particular discussion item, ladies and gentlemen.
I think so.
This was a public hearing, a public discussion. Did anyone have any other concerns about this particular discussion item before we close it out? Hearing none, we'll go on to discussion item number three. Mr. Lyon?
PC 2072, public hearing with discussion and consideration of approval of a resolution for a special use permit to allow the use of eating establishment, sit-down, alcoholic beverages permitted in C-3 Community Commercial District for the property described as a part of the Southwest Corridor, Section 3, Township 11 North, Range 2 West, located 1100 South, Air Depot Boulevard, Suite 5.
Mr. Harless?
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This parcel is currently zoned C-3 Community Commercial. A single structure with multiple retail and restaurant spaces is located at the area of request. The space addresses 1100 South Air Depot Boulevard, Suite 5, is the site of Fusion Kitchen. The applicant is proposing to sell alcohol beverages within the restaurant, which is the reason for the special use permit application. The site plan was not required with this application, as the building is existing. Notice was sent to all property owners at the three hundred feet of the area. Staff has not received any calls or letters of protest at this time of writing. Action is at the discretion of the council, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
The applicant is here.
Is there any reason to preclude this?
Staff hasn't seen any reason, no, sir.
Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry? This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to say about this particular issue? Ma'am, did, are you the owner? Okay. What's your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Navata Meckler, and the restaurant's name is Fusion Kitchen.
Okay, could you move just a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any, just questions of the owner?
They are a wonderful addition to our city. They're the second owners, I believe, that bought it from the couple whose kid was a chess champion at Carl Albert, and they've done a wonderful job. I don't get to eat there as much as I like, but being able to serve beer would be even more amazing.
Thank you for that insightful input, Mr. Reed.
Here's every so often, after I talk them out, I have to have a beer, and it's on my way home. It would be awesome.
Once again.
Let me annotate Mr. Reed's comment.
If there's no other discussion or questions of the owner, Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We'll call that a mic drop.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. You're approved.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you for being here. We'll move on to discussion item number four. Mr. Lyon?
CA 79, discussion and consideration of appeal by Global Sign Solutions to Section 9-384 H7 of the Midwest City Side Ordinance, which limits the size of direction signs to a maximum of four square feet of displaced surface area, of surface areas, Section 9-385X, which prohibits off-premise advertising from all zoning districts except industrials. Section 9-386C, which states that only one freestanding sign shall be allowed per frontage, and Section 9-386D, which prohibits freestanding signs from being located within the right-of-way for the property addressed at 2825 Park Lawn Drive. Mr. Harless?
Again, thanks, Mr. Lyon. I think everybody's familiar with the hospital, and this is in an effort to rebrand St. Anthony's Hospital and put all new signage, new wayfinding signage. There's a number of them that are either in the right-of-way or being replaced, or there's actually twenty-two of them. I'll be glad to read through all of those if you'd like.
No, thank you.
I figured that. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold on just a minute. We did have somebody sign up to talk about this. Could you, let's see, Cameron? You want to give your name and address, and tell us why you're here?
Yeah, my name is Cameron Gleason. I'm with GNS Sign Services, located 1634 Southeast 23rd Street, Oklahoma City. I basically just wanted to just kind of review, that's actually GNS Sign Services, not Global Sign Solutions. We get that common mix-up quite a bit with GSS, so it's G ampersand S Sign Services, but it sounds like pretty, everyone's pretty familiar with the package.
And you're doing the signage for SSM St. Anthony, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions, Cameron? Again, an entertaining motion?
Motion was made.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Thank you, Cameron, for being here, and we look forward to the new signage around the hospital.
Thank you very much.
Make it look nice. Okay, now we move into question, or discussion item number five.
Okay, discussion item number five is discussion and consideration of accepting the monthly report on the City of Midwest City Employees Health Benefits Plan by the City Manager, and action is deemed necessary by council to maintain the plan. This is really more just an informational purpose, that I pulled this off. Normally, it would be on consent agenda, but I just wanted the council to be aware where we have passed mid-year. We are, our plan is not having a good year, and we are meeting with Insurica this week to review what it looks like for our renewals, and potentially what our premiums are going to have to look like, and start the actuarial process and studying the premiums, which will eventually go to the Health Benefits Committee and then come to council. But it's just something I would feel like that I need, as your city manager, to let you know that our health benefits plan is, on a cash basis, is probably under a million dollars, which is kind of our threshold. We don't want to go under a million dollars. But because we have a number of rebates coming on our PBM, our pharmacy benefit management contract, that, that on a budgetary basis, we are above the million-dollar number, so we're watching this thing very closely.
And when you talk about the million dollars, is that our stop loss?
No, the million dollars really is just a threshold that we've had for a very long time. When you look at, when you look at the gap, you look at the difference between what all your stop losses are, your aggregate attachment point, and then how much you fund, and within that is a gap, and inside that gap is unfunded. And so, on a worst-case scenario, how much money do we need to fund that gap? And it's always, I've always tried to keep that around a million dollars.
So, we're approaching that stop, I mean, that gap, we're going to have to start putting some more money on it.
So, should we look at one of the things is increasing that million-dollar line for the simple fact that we do have some more employees and medical expenses are getting more expensive? And if we're trying to keep the same million-dollar line that we kept ten years ago, that's probably not realistic. Should we look at doing something different?
Well, I think it's always each year, when we look at the budget, and is, and Troy, you can step in anytime you want and correct me, but we've always looked at that stop gap. We have to, we have to make sure that there's money to make the bills if we go worst-case scenario, which hits aggregate attachment point, which is, do you know what that number is right now?
I believe it's about 8.2 million.
So, 8.2 million, and on a budgetary basis, you look at your revenue at, and I'll just have to analyze on the fly here, 8.7. So, that's roughly about a five, $600,000 gap, and so, at some point, the aggregate attachment point takes over for all claims. So, we have $150,000 SIR, self-insured retention, and then after that, the claim's covered by the first-line coverage, and then the aggregate coverage is for the whole, as the group as a whole, so...
Now, is this, I mean, are our claims...
It's a complicated management process.
Are our claims up due to COVID, or just the fact that we've had some catastrophics?
Last year, we had, we had a handful of employees and retirees who had very large claims. This year, it's been more, we have, we've had fewer large individual claims, but we have, we've had more larger claims than normal.
But to answer the, and that's, to answer the question on COVID, the answer is yes. We do have, we, when I first looked at it, it was well over $200,000 in COVID costs, and we've had at least three or four people in the hospital since then. So, I can assure you that number is a half million or better.
So, this is hopefully, pardon me, this is hopefully more of an outlier, as we continue to vaccinate, wear masks, get this under control. We're hoping this is an outlier, not what's to come.
That's correct. And as we get vaccinated, that we'll see these numbers go down.
So, we'll expect some more input later on. This is just kind of a heads-up.
Yes.
We've got an issue, and we need to look at it.
Correct.
Okay, so no actions needed on this particular item?
No, sir.
I have a question before we move.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Lyon, if there's going to be a meeting in terms of trying to figure out where we're going to be with regard to premium costs, and since you said our SIR is 150,000?
Yes.
I mean, is it a possibility to increase our SIR in order to offset that sum as well?
We can, but when you do that, you accept more liability, is the only bad thing about that. So, you have to look at, you know, we trend the numbers and try to, try to trend our frequency to see how many claims you would have over it, and then cost-benefit that, obviously, back to the, back to what the savings would be. But we can do that. We do all that every year. I mean, we dive into this thing with, with our broker.
Thank you.
So, Tim, with me being due to the council, I know we're with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and they're good. Presumably be good for the most part. Do we look at other insurers?
We have looked at other insurers. We've looked at First Dollar Coverage, but I think right now, we have, we continue to feel like Blue Cross and Blue Shield is our best option, by being in their network. There's other, there's United Healthcare and others out there, but, you know, Blue Cross and Blue Shield is preferred by our employees.
But not all of our costs are Blue Cross, Blue Shields. We have that intermediary, whoever, Gallagher or something like that. Are there companies that could manage it for cheaper?
I think they were just the TPA.
Yeah. Blue Cross is our TPA. We play, we pay a flat fee brokerage fee for our, for our broker, who's really our consultant. I really shouldn't call him a broker, because that's really not accurate.
But are there other consultants slash brokers out there that we could look at that might be a cost savings?
Yeah, but it's like $60,000 out of 8 million. It's a small number.
The consultant fee is, the consultant fee is very reasonable, and from what we can find out, and the value return on that is, is much greater than 60,000.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
No action needed on that particular item. Move into item number six.
Discussion to consider and adopt a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Midwest City, State of Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city, the question of the issuance of the general obligation bonds of said city in the sum of $5,700,000 to be issued in series to provide funds, either with or without state or federal aid for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, reconstruction, improving, remodeling, repairing, public safety buildings and facilities, including extending utilities, improving access thereto, and purchasing and installing public safety equipment, all to be owned exclusively by the said city as authorized by Section 27, Article 10 of the Constitution statutes of the State of Oklahoma, and acts complimentary, supplementary, and enacted pursuant thereto and in connection with said bonds, the question of levying and collecting an annual tax, in addition to all other taxes upon all taxable property, property in the said city for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds.
This is the reissuance of our Public Safety Training Building. As you know, we pulled that project and, and for, for a number of reasons, and now we've taken a look back at it. We picked, the staff has picked a new site, and we need to go forward with the funding of it. Is there any questions or anything, or Mr. Lyon? Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item, number seven. Mr. Lyon?
This will be an addendum to the City Council. Item seven, discussion and consideration of a resolution and proclamation of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, approving and proposing amendments to the Charter of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, approving the ballot title, authorizing the calling and holding of special election in the City of Midwest City, County of Oklahoma, State of Oklahoma, on May 11, 2021, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, the question of whether to approve the proposed amendments to the charter, providing, for publication of the proposed charter amendments, and providing for submission of any approved charter amendments to the governor.
That's the date of the bond issue, too, Bill.
Yes, date of the bond issue as well.
And once again, Ms. Poole, and our previous prosecutor brought forth some changes in charter, just clean-up language. It hadn't been updated since 1998. To bring it, bring it into scope, clean up some adequate language, and just clean it up. Is that a fair assessment, Ms. Poole?
Yes, and Community Development also had input as well.
Any questions or comments? Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Move on to item number eight.
Discussion and consideration of approving and ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Section, I mean, Article 2, City Council, Section 2-17, Elected Official Accountability Acts and Ethics Policy, Providing for Repealer and Severability.
And once again, this is an adaptation or adoption of just a code of ethics for the council and elected officials, and also board and commission members throughout the city. You've had a chance to look at it, so are there any questions or comments? Chair to entertain a motion?
We've got, she needs to come in and speak.
Oh. I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm going to be challenging you here for a second. This is Sandy Boyle. Not going to give my address, because it's a request, and I consider it tantamount to doxing.
No problem. Go ahead, Ms. Boyle.
And that's all, that's the only thing I had on that. But on the ethics, I, this is, Mr. Lyons, I'd love to meet with you, because I have several things.
Could you speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
That's, that's a first, by the way. Pull it down?
There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'd love to meet with you, Mr. Lyons, because several of the things I had notes on today, I think are in your ballpark. Maybe not everybody else needs to hear them. In this regard, I would like to see hyperlinks to let us see what the edits are. I have no idea what the yays and nays are. I don't know what the topics are.
We'll make sure it's available to you.
I mean, as, as a protocol for the agendas, because there's several things where I'm like, oh, and I read this. I read it yesterday, and then I read it again today, which was different, much more expanded. So it would be nice, I actually have the printouts, the one that I printed yesterday. They are not the same. So that's part of what I'd like to meet Mr. Lyons on, sort of a protocol of how agendas are, what the timings are, how much time the constituents get to read it before we come here and, you know, to sense whatever we have to say. So in this cart, this one is really is, I'd love to know what's in it. Because I think the next one's going to have to do with the control that is going to be in emergency procedures. So I'd like to know what that is, instead of just.
Fair enough.
Kyron, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming, and we'll work with our city clerk to see if we can improve our communication. Again, if there's no other discussion, and a chair to entertain a motion?
I have a question for Heather.
Yes, sir.
Heather, are you comfortable with everything that's in there?
In the ordinance?
Yes, and in, and what changes in, what's being filed in number eight?
In the code of conduct?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, again, this is what we have reviewed, because you all have seen this before, meaning the council. The mayor took quite a few different cities' code of conducts, looked at pieces that he was interested in including. There are edits that were provided by Mr. Reed that were addressed in the, well, he was the one that submitted edits, Mr. Byrne, so.
I'm the only one that took the homework seriously and redlined it. I'm sorry.
So, so this has been an ongoing process, and, and it has been, really, the mayor has put in a lot of time in terms of looking at what's out there. And I provided him materials from a conference that I went to that really reflect a lot of what has ended up in our code of conduct and our ordinance in terms of actions that the International Municipal Attorneys Association recommends. So, yeah.
Thank you, Heather. Is there any further discussion? Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration of approving and ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 11, Emergency Management by adopting Section 11-3, powers of the city manager during declared emergency and providing for severability.
And once again, this particular item actually was brought forward by Councilman Reed, or not Reed, but Byrne, during our recent declaration of, of an emergency. And basically, the council is still going to have to declare an emergency. But what we do is streamline the process and give the city manager the ability to make contracts and continue handling the business without coming back to the city council and saying, "Mother, may I?" Just extreme, and, and it's obviously, it's going to be up to him to make sure that we are kept informed of any changes, but allows him the ability to move forward and handle the emergency. So, are there any questions? Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Now we move into new business, public discussion?
One more.
One more?
Yeah.
Number ten.
Is that?
Number 10.
Okay, discussion item number 10. Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration of one, acceptance of an association of Central Oklahoma Government Public Fleet Conversion Grant in the amount of $59,531, approving and entering to a public fleet conversion grant with ACOG to establish the terms and conditions of the grant for the provision of reimbursement of certain costs incurred for the purchase of a new compressed natural gas, CNG, truck, and authorizing the mayor and/or city manager into the necessary contracts, agreements, to implement the grant. This, this represents the CNG portion of the truck. The truck costs a whole lot more than $59,000. This is just to turn it into a diesel truck into CNG. But they'll pay for it, so.
And this is part of the Quinair grants that are going out to ACOG, or from ACOG through federal, federal transportation dollars. And we have been lucky to receive several of these in a row and converted a big portion of our trucks over to CNG. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Anybody have any questions, or, yes, ma'am?
These were all done by addendum, and so that, I mean, there isn't a hyperlink that's anyway.
You know, these, these were last-minute addendums, ma'am, we're sorry.
That's fine. That's fine. Sandy Boyle, again.
And Cam, help, Ms. Boyle?
Yeah.
I'm Jill. I've got you on the phone. And we'll, we'll, we'll stop tomorrow, and I'll show you how to get those issues from the app.
What are we talking about? I'm not sure what she's talking about.
It's an email that goes out to individuals who are interested in receiving notifications of what items are being placed on different committee and meeting agendas.
I didn't have that question.
I, well, that was what Ms. Donaldson was trying to.
I think you're confusing me with somebody, some other tall model. I don't know, somebody else.
Go ahead with your question.
My, my question had to do with, it's a repeated thing I've seen in here about grants. A grant is supposed to be, thank you very much, you know, whatever, you've earned it. I got it. I feel like it's double-dipping. If you're on salary, why are we getting a cost reversal for the person working the grant when you're on salary from the Midwest City? It feels like a double-dipping.
This is a, this is a grant from this, essentially through the federal government, through the state cog to pay for the CNG conversion on a truck.
It's not what it says, though. It says, "The mayor and/or city manager to enter into the necessary contracts agreement and implement the grant."
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am. We will have the ability to accept the grant and convert the truck.
So if this was about converting the truck, that's okay. But there's several other places that this comes up where it has to do with paying back for the, basically, the work of the person administering the.
Nobody's receiving any.
No, I don't mean anybody's receiving it. I mean, if it's being, if the work of a city employee is being paid for by monies in a grant, to me, it's misused funds.
No, there's nobody being paid for by this grant. I'm.
Forgiven. I'll say the word forgiven. If the payment of the grant is paying for the work of the city employee and forgiving that amount.
This is being done, ma'am, this is being done at the factory.
Okay, that's this one, but it'll come up several times.
They're like community development block grants, provide administrative, there's a piece of that can be for administrative costs, which pays for.
So it's in the program?
Not this program, but overall. I mean, we're getting off, we're getting off-topic, but.
Yeah, because there's several.
Come by our office, and we'll sit down and visit.
Exactly. We should sit and talk.
Okay, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you again, ma'am. All right, Chair to entertain a motion, approved?
Approved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Now we move into new business, public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council?
I do, because it's, and I know it's out of order, and you can tell me I should have done it earlier.
That's quite all right.
But I didn't know this. We brag on our kids in school. Carl Over did it again today. Second in boys and first in girls for the swimming. The girls just won, it's a three-peat for the.
Wow.
He did what?
Won the state title?
Wow, he won the state. They won the state title for the girls' swimming, and the boys were second. Wow, cool.
Carl Over Crox. Thank you. Hearing nothing to bring before the council, we do have an executive session. Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration of entering to, of one entering to executive session as allowed under Title 25, Section 307b, for discuss confidential communications between a public body, its attorney, concerning a pending investigation, claim, or action if the public body, with the advice of its attorney, determines disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest. And to an open session, authorizing the city manager to take action is appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Ladies and gentlemen, I request that we recess from the council agenda and move into the municipal authority, and then reconvene and come back to the executive session.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We, the Midwest City Council now stands at recess, and I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda attached to this agenda, and these items are placed on consent agendas of the trustees. All units consent can approve route to an agenda item as filed in motion. If any item opposed does not meet with the approval of all the trustees or members of the audience who wish to discuss an item, it will be moved and heard and made with order. Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion, second.
Except for item number four.
I'm sorry?
Except for item number four.
We have it in the council agenda.
Correct.
Don't we have to, we don't have to do it in the municipal authority? Okay. So pull, so make a motion to approve everything except for four?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Attorney, do we have to address number four now, because it's on there, and just take no action? Or do we just ignore it?
You can just ignore it. You've passed everything else. The fact that you didn't pass four on this agenda doesn't mean that when you passed on the council, it wasn't effective.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we need no action on that?
No.
You can just leave it, Matt, because we've already passed it.
That's what I thought.
I guess it's a strike.
Okay.
Strike.
Item number, we get a discussion, no other discussion items on this agenda? All right. We move into new business, public discussion for the municipal authorities. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? We're now hereby adjourned. I call it order to the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have three discussion items.
No actions needed on number one. Number, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at three. Number one, discussion and consideration of approving the minutes of the January 26, 2021 meeting as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Discussion and consideration of supplemental budget adjustments to the following fund for fiscal year 2020-21, increase hospital authority fund expenses, hospital authority, $2,744. Hospital authority fund expense, hospital authority, $90, $122.
So we know how I like to be, speed things up. Is there a dollar limit we could put, like, kind of like giving you authority up to $25,000 in negotiations on stuff like this? You don't have to come to us for $2,744 and $122?
Let us talk about that. Let us, let the staff talk about that.
No, that's what, I didn't mean to answer right now. I just, there's truthfully no reason for us to discuss this.
I know some cities do allow certain thresholds on supplements, but we need to, we'll have to do some research. Usually, we do these in.
We've approved the budget, and if we give you the authority to do this, and it's legal, then we don't have to talk about $2,744 and $122. We did, it's various things that we've given them approval on, but not this one. This is a budgetary item.
Because this is a budget that, this is out of fund balance. $25,040. Yeah.
But it would be nice if we never had to talk about that dollar amount again.
Usually, they're in consent items, but, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look.
Or can you move it to consent? At the very least, we don't read every consent. I, I.
I know.
You just spent $2,744 a time. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number three.
No action taken.
No action needed. Now we move into new business, public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none. We have an executive session attached to this agenda. Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration of one entering into executive session as allowed under 25OS 307C11, confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or locate within the city, and to an open session, authorizing the general manager, administrator, take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Once again, I request that we recess from this agenda and move into the next agenda and come back to reconvene.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are hereby recessed. I call to order the Special Economic Development Authority. We do have consent agenda, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
So that's on the consent agenda right there, and it's a budgetary.
We now move into new business, public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority?
Do what?
Hearing none, and hereby adjourned, and reconvene the Midwest City Council.
You hate when I catch stuff like that, don't you?
And I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Take a five-minute break.
Second. All in favor?
Take a five-break.
We're now in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, have a good night, and thank you for being here. Drive safely.